Dear Lord God, Heavenly Father, I thank you for brothers and sisters in Christ, for partners in the gospel and friends who would dive into the Word of God together with me. I ask you that you would give us insights this day that we can make a part of our lives. Show us what it looks like to be triumphant, victorious, faithful men and women of God in the world as such as it is in this day. Allow us the joy that comes from our baptism, connecting us to the cross and the empty tomb, and leading us to know that you are with us now and you will take us home. Dear Lord, be with us and show us how it is that we use the gifts that have been given to us in such a way that we are strengthened for the life before us. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen. So, I guess I should make an announcement. Next Sunday and the Sunday after, I'm gonna take a little detour. I know you find that hard to believe. I'm gonna take a little detour because of a bunch of things. One of the things that is out in front of us as a congregation is a clinic. Right? We do that every year. And if you've been looking at the news at all, and if you've been seeing what's going on in the country, especially those cities where ICE has come to those cities, you'll know that there's some wisdom we need to gain around how it is that we as a family of God navigate a day like the clinic. And so I need to be able to equip God's people to think biblically about all these things. Not politically and not emotionally, but biblically. So that as a ministry, not as individuals, but as a ministry, we can navigate days like that and days like the ones that are before us in such a way that Satan doesn't divide and conquer. And we love our neighbor and we respect authority. And so how do we as a congregation walk down that? I want to dive into the Word of God together and just let Him speak to us. Does that make sense? And it's very timely and it's in prep for, it's in prep for clinic frankly. And so I think it would help all of us to navigate news and to navigate the fact that depending on who you're listening to, the enemy is one group or the other. And so it's an amazing thing to try and find truth in the day in which we live. But, and so I want to be able to dive into the Word of God about how you, how you treat the alien and the stranger in your midst, and then also dive into what does it mean to respect authority? And how do you walk in the middle of all that? How do you, how do you as a ministry walk in the middle of all that? And I would just tell you that I have a lot of experience with this. Not all of it good. Not all of it good. When I was at Hales Corners Lutheran Church, like six months after we got there, there was a group called Westboro Baptist Church. You ever heard of these people? Westboro Baptist Church decided they were going to picket Hales Corners Lutheran Church because they thought that we were too loving and too opening to people who were gay or homosexual. And without ever talking to me about it, without ever seeing anything or knowing anything, the only thing that they knew is that we had a support group, this really cool support group for parents and grandparents of kids and grandkids who were in that lifestyle somehow. And we wanted to support those parents and grandparents and give them tools for not condemning and ruining the relationship, but also not condoning. And how do you, how do you navigate that so that you walk in the mess of all that? And so that's what we were doing. And they decided that was, that was worth picketing. And so it was on national news and praise God. I had a little old man who did not listen to what I said. And so on that morning, on that morning, we had like 120 police officers on campus because Hales Corners Lutheran Church has one of the largest police support group, devotional group. I was a chaplain and these folks were with me. And so we had more police officers on campus than there were picketers. And by the time, by the time the news got there, it was such a not event that they turned around and left. But one of the guys didn't do what I told him. One of my guys who didn't care what the pastor said, he just wanted to do what he thought was right. And so he started walking up to those who were picketing and handing them tracts about, you know, those turn or burn tracts, you know? God loves you, we love you. Turn away from evil and come be with us. Those tracts. And I'm like, come on, man. We, this is not the time to evangelize. So, so anyway, and then I could tell you other stories as well about this kind of journey. So I want to dive into the Word of God next two weeks and arm ourselves with biblical wisdom that can counterbalance both your emotion and the politic of the day. Make sense? And I think it's timely. I think it's important for us as a congregation in the world in which we live. So, there you go. We are making plans. We are making plans and taking those kinds of steps connected to security and connected to other kinds of things. And the sensitivities are necessary in order to navigate that time well. But this Bible class now, I just wanted to make that announcement and then, and then take us on back into Bible, back into baptism if we can. But thank you, thank you. And so open your catechism if you can find it. Let me restate that sentence. Open your catechism to baptism if you can find it, not if you can find your catechism. And, and so Luther's treatment of the topic of baptism is separated out into four topics, if you will, four topics, four parts, if you will. And the first part talks about the hallmark Bible passage upon which our understanding of baptism is hung. It's Matthew 28, Matthew 28, 16 through 20 is what I want to look at, Matthew 28, 16 through 20. But I would, I would just take you into the catechism in what's called the first part, the nature of baptism. Have you found that where you are? The nature of baptism. So baptism is not just plain water. Well, it is just plain water. But when you connect the water, when you use something really, really mundane and you connect it to the Word of God and the Holy Spirit, they do powerful things with normal things, right? I mean, look at each one of us. Almighty God takes pretty ordinary things. I mean, some of you are exceptional, but some of you are like me and pretty ordinary. But God takes the ordinary things of the world and does extraordinary things with them, right? And we can see it in us, you can see it in different kinds of things. You can see it, He told the king to get healed from leprosy by going to the Jordan River and washing seven times, just water, right? Just being obedient and following through. And so it's, it is just plain water. But when you connect the water to the power agent, everything that you would talk about in our relationship with Almighty God, Almighty God is the power agent. When you talk about prayer, there's no power in prayer, there's power in God. And when you're talking to Him, you're accessing Him and His power and His love for you. Therefore prayer is very powerful indeed. But it's about the access that you have to Him. He's the power agent, right? And so the same is true in baptism. We connect it to normal, ordinary things. It's just water, right? Any elders in the room? Where do you get the water? From the sink in the kitchen. Praise God. And, but then, but then, don't miss this, when you set it apart for use and the Holy Spirit connected to the word uses it that way, it becomes a baptism. It becomes a life-giving water and we rejoice in that. So that's why it says baptism is not just plain water, but it's water included in God's command and combined with God's word. And then it says, which is that Word of God? And it takes us to Matthew 28. I would like to look at 16 through 20, Matthew 28, Matthew 28, 16 through 20. And so where is Matthew? So turn in your Bibles to Matthew 29. Praise God. Right? There is no Matthew 29. So, and the Gospels are the life story of Jesus, right? From one point to another point, right? And, and this is at the end when all has been accomplished in the 33 years that He lived and the life and the death and the resurrection. After all of that is over and He's done everything that He was sent to do on the mission of rescuing me from hell. And He accomplished all of that. He gathers all of His disciples together and He says Matthew 28, Matthew 28, 16 through 20. So if you want to look into that, the 11 disciples went to Galilee to the mountain where Jesus told them to go. Awesome. Obedience is key. Obedience is key. When they saw Him, they worshiped, what's the next phrase? But some doubted. Notice in verse 18, it begins by saying, Jesus came to them and said. Now, did the word "them" include the doubting people? Yes. There was no judgment whatsoever in the text or in Jesus's heart throughout the Word of God about those who have doubts, right? He comes to a, He comes to a man and the man asks Him to work a miracle in his life and Jesus, Jesus responds to him. And the man says, "Lord, I believe, help my unbelieve." And Jesus praises the man, praises the man in the midst of that. "Lord, I believe, help my unbelieve." There are, God loves you in the midst of your boldness and your confidence, but also God loves you in your questions. God loves you in your frustrations and in your doubts and in your struggles with anything that you're going through in this life. He loves you in the midst of that, right? And it's just amazing to me, I'm sure we wouldn't be like the doubters in this text. I mean, think about what they had seen. Some of them for three and a half years have now seen all of the miracles. They've seen Him suffer and die the death of the cross, rise again from the dead. They've seen Him resurrected. And yet still, there were some saying, how can this be? You wouldn't have been like that, right? Well, I mean, I pray not. I pray not. But my point is that there was no judgment here. He didn't stop and say, "Come on, man. What else do I gotta do?" Right? So, but, but what Jesus is saying to them and what Jesus is saying to us is that there was a conversation back here between me and the Father, all the way back, however far you want to go, there was a conversation where the rescue mission trip was designed and Jesus said, "Hear Him, I send Me." And He came as a babe in a manger. He was conceived, He was born, He lived His life to fulfill the law for us. He suffered and died, He rose again from the dead. And before He ascends back into heaven, He gathers them all together and says to them, "Now, I've done everything that I was sent to do. I've done everything that I've sent, was sent to do." And so you want to read this first part of Matthew 18, Matthew 28, 18 that way. So in verse 18, it says, "Jesus came to them and said, 'All authority in heaven and on earth have been given to me.'" Well, who gave it to Him? The Father. Why was it given to Him? There are different theologians who think differently about the answer to this question. Some think exactly the way your brilliant minds think over there at that table. But some think about the idea of authority was given to Him because He'd accomplished everything that He was sent to do, which is exactly the way I set you up to answer. The other theologians, many Lutheran theologians believe that all authority in heaven and on earth have been given to Me because from the very foundation of the world, He is Almighty From the very foundation of the world, all authority has been His. It's always been His, it always will be His because Jesus is Lord. He didn't get it just because He did what He was sent to do. So in the middle of all of that is probably where the truth is. It's probably, okay, from the very foundation of the world, when Almighty God the Father said, "Let there be light," it was Jesus who went out, the Word, who later would be made flesh. It was the Word who went out to create everything for which He was sent to create, right? And so that, that authority of creation, that authority of redemption, that authority has been His because His identity has been and always will be 100% God. And then, on the mission trip, on the rescue trip of a lifetime, He comes to save us and He has now said, "It is finished." Right? It is finished. So it's kind of a both and in this context, not an either or. And when you, when you think about, when you think about the idea of what He's saying, "All authority in heaven and on earth have been given to Me," the very next words that He says are in that authority. Everything He said was in that authority. But you know that having finished everything that He was sent to do, now right before He ascends back into heaven, He's talking to the disciples and He starts out by saying, "All authority in heaven and on earth have been given to Me, therefore..." The next words out of His mouth are gonna be huge. They're gonna be really important, right? Really important. And what are those next words? "Therefore, go and do what?" And what three tools does He give us in order to get that work done? Baptism, what else? Teaching, what else? His presence. His presence, right? His presence. Because frankly, bluntly, I have never, I have never been the, I have, I have been the instrument that Almighty God used to bring someone from unbelieve to faith, but I've never done it myself. It's always been the Holy Spirit. It's always been the Holy Spirit using a broken vessel like me, like you, right? And so, and so the presence of Jesus all along the way as we are sent, as we are sent to make disciples. What is a disciple? Follower, right? What other words come to mind? Learner. What else comes to mind? What? Shepherd to servant, that kind of relationship? So it'd be the, it'd be the servant, yes? Leader, okay? So, teacher, all right? So the, y'all are really good. So the idea, so the idea here in terms of discipleship would be something along the lines of the words that you provided. It would be a lifelong learner who puts himself under the lordship of the teacher and master and wants to continue all of his or her life to learn and to follow and to grow and to be loved and to love in that relationship, right? Discipleship, that's, that's what that was, that word is all about. A lot of churches use that word, discipleship, and then it becomes so legalistic in the way that they use it that people don't want to hear that word anymore. But, but it is a beautiful word about a loving relationship between Almighty God up here and me down here and how He loves me, how He loves me and how I learn and how I love Him back. And it's all about that, that loving relationship. So He says to us, "You go." I used to get in trouble with lifelong Lutherans. Maybe I still do. Because I would say to them in my young boldness and naivety, I would say to them, "The church exists for the sake of the people who do not yet know Jesus." And then people would, at a gut level, come to me and they would say, "Well, what about us?" Right? What about us? And rightly so. They would come to me and they would complain. And they would come and they would say, "Well, that's not the only reason." But understand, the church exists. Why does the church exist? The church exists, huh? For God, as a bride to the bridegroom. Is that what you're thinking, Larry? Awesome. Awesome. Okay, what else comes to mind for you? Wow, y'all. Huh? Yeah, yeah. So let me, y'all are, you think too deeply. The, that was meant to be a backhanded compliment. What I was thinking was the church exists to gather the people of God together and to hand out the gifts of God to the people of God and the forgiveness, the abundant life and the salvation so that, so that they can love one another and hold on to one another in the midst of and sometimes in spite of the world in which they live. But what happens to many churches is that all of the things down that side of the equation about, about the idea that it really is about you and Jesus and your love for Him and His love for you and how He puts you together with family and friends and new friends and, and you do life together in the family of God. One of the things that the church has got to constantly fight against is the idea that that's the end of our purpose. That the reason we exist is to be loved by God, to love Him back and to love one another. And to get into the Word of God and grow in the Word of God so that we can know more and we can love one another more. And whatever other kinds of inside things would be there, all of those things exist in their beauty and they, for the sake of a, of a really healthy congregation, they all need to be a present. But I would tell you, each and every one of them, each and every one of them, worship, Bible study, fellowship, discipleship, if it doesn't result in, "Go ye therefore and make disciples of all nations." We are gathered together in here so that the resulting end would take place out there. You need to love one another well and love Him well in this place. But this Bible study is meant to equip and inspire you to be more equipped, to live life out there and give a witness and to, and to share your faith and to share the hope you have in your heart that you're saved and to meet need and to invite others back here into this relationship with, with Him and with one another. And here, as the, at the very pinnacle of having lived, having died, having risen again, before He ascends back into heaven, He sets that record straight and says to us, "Here's why you exist. Here's what you're doing. Here are your marching orders. Don't wait for them to come to you. Go. There was a time in Trinity's past and in the Lutheran, in the church in America where we would build a building and put people together and people would come. People would come and as long as your pastor wasn't a jerk, people would keep coming. And the, I'm sorry, that was supposed to be funny. And, and the family of God would be built up and do innovative and progressive and creative things for the day in which they lived. There was a time when that was the way that the church grew, right? There was a time when that's true. Is it still true? And one of the things that churches have a hard time doing is shifting. Now that that's not working anymore, we have to shift. And many people in churches have been doing that kind of thought process and worldview so long that they're having a hard time with the gut-wrenching change of what it takes to shift to missional, to entrepreneurial. Let me, let me ask you a question about the history of Trinity. The personality of this congregation, has it been more rigid or more progressive? Yeah, Dottie?
I'd say it's definitely been more progressive. I often said, if I moved someplace and Missouri Center Church was inclusive like this, I would go.
Turned in on itself, right? Right? That's what you meant by the word inclusive, okay? And so you have people all the time at Trinity, just like we did at Hales Corners, who come to you after they move somewhere else, usually Florida or Arizona. And they, and they come back to you then and they say, "We can't find anything like Trinity where we are. Help me, pastor. Help..." Well, you shouldn't have moved. That's my help. They don't like that help very much. But the idea of, the idea of, the idea of every generation of believers at every congregation has a tendency to settle in to the rut of, this is the way it's done when it's done right. Whatever your answer to that is, whatever your answer to that is. And I wish I had a Lutheran worship. I wish, I wish I had a Lutheran worship because in the introduction, in the introduction, Al Berry, Synodical President, a really good, close, personal friend of mine, he, is that Lutheran worship or is that? Can I have that, please? Well done, Kim. I figured you'd be as brain dead as I am today, but you're right on top of it. Praise God. You are really, you are really good. So I love this. I love this and I think about it often. So President of the Lutheran Church, Missouri Senate, in the years when Lutheran worship, now we've, now we've got Lutheran Service Book, right? So there's a different, there's a different introduction written by the district, the Synodical President when it was written. But Al Berry says this, "Our Lord speaks and we listen. His word gives what it says. Faith that is born from what is heard acknowledges of the gifts received with eager thankfulness and praise. Music is drawn into the thankfulness and the praise, enlarging and elevating the adoration of our gracious giver God. Saying back to Him what He has said to us, what He has first said to us, we repeat what is most true and sure. Most true and sure is His name, which He put upon us in the waters of our baptism." We are His. We are His. This we acknowledge at the beginning of the divine service. We begin with something called an invocation. If you invoke something, that means you call it. You call it out. You call it in. And so, one of the things that always bugs me... Get here long enough, I'm gonna get through the whole list. By the time... Well, nevermind. But it always bugs me when pastors will say, at the beginning of a worship service in an invocation, "We begin." We don't begin. He begins us. Right? And what we say is, "In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, to remember our baptism." But it was He who called us by name in the waters of our baptism. It was He who brought us together there. It's He who gives us forgiveness, abundant life, salvation, and our identity. It's He who gives us the entry right into the Lord's Supper and into worship. It all begins with Him. And then the faithful people respond. The baptized respond. That's the flavor of invocation in the divine service. Does that make sense? It's not, "We begin. We got up. We got ourselves here. We got dressed. We did this work. We made it here." Oh, no. It was the Lord who reminded you of who you are, and got your sorry self up out of the bed, and got you here even though that you would have rather stayed home. It was the Lord, the Holy Spirit, who brought you to this place, that you would be exactly where you belong among the people of God. It was the Lord who did that work, gave you forgiveness, abundant life, salvation, identity, purpose, and belonging, and invites you every week up to the mountaintop of Trinity, the sanctuary. He invites you to climb your way up to the sanctuary, so that you would, from the valley of your week, you would come into the presence of Almighty God. And He would begin by telling you and reminding you, the baptized, by saying to you, "In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit." Right? That's what Berry's saying here, when he says, "Saying back to Him what He has said to us, we repeat what is most true and sure. Most true and sure is His name, which He put upon us in the waters of our baptism. We are His. This we acknowledge at the beginning of the divine service. Where His name is, there is He. Where His name is, there is He." That's why Jesus says, "Wherever two or more gather together in My name, there am I in the midst of them." Right? So we gather together in His name. Before Him, we acknowledge that we are sinners, and we plead, we beg for His forgiveness. His forgiveness is given us, and we freed and forgiven. Acclaim Him as our great and gracious God, as we apply to ourselves the words that He has used to make Himself known to us. The rhythm of our worship is always from Him, from Him to us, and then from us back to Him. Why? Go ahead.
But aside from all of it, and I'm saying this objectively, even so, a pastor may be a jerk. The premises of our church is part of the church. And here I stand with those 95 priests nailed to the door. That's the foundation of everything we believe in, correct?
No. No. Martin Luther did not want the church to be called Lutheran. His response was, "I did not die for you. I am not the Lord."
But the fact, he was... His convictions were so strong due to what he did at that time.
So if we say together, "Sola scriptura, sola fide, sola gratia", if we say all of those solas, based on that foundation of who we are, that takes us back into the Word, beyond Luther. But it is the foundation of the Lutheran Reformation and what Luther stood for. Is that what you're saying?
He was the instrument of God that brought us here in Rosaleville, Illinois, correct? Among other places, well, Missouri Senate.
He is one of the saints along the way that God used in a powerful way to give to us the identity that we stand on today. But one of the saints. There is Adam, there is Jesus, there is Moses, there is Elijah, there is Paul, there's Peter, there is the early church fathers, all along the way, from Augustine to Tertullian to others. And then in its train, for that season, for that Reformation, and for the reclaiming of the sweetness of the gospel, when it had been, when it had fallen into heretical teaching and thought, Luther stood in his day. But we, we, and all those who come before us, like Charlie Mueller, and all those who come before us, we stand on all of their shoulders. And that sense of... Here's what I'm struggling with. I'm struggling with why we're talking about this right now.
Because the foundation of our church is what it is based on the convictions as priests, as a priori.
Luther got his convictions from the Word of God. And he would always try to point you past Him, back to the Word of God. And so that's what we're doing in Bible study. And I love Luther. I give thanks to God for Luther, and I rejoice. I would not be an LCMS pastor if I didn't hold Luther in high regard. But I would not be faithful to who he is if I held him up too high. Make sense? Because of His own words, and His own heritage, and His own sense that it is Word of God, grace of God, God, that we hold very, very high. So let me take you back into this. The rhythm of our worship is from Him to us, and then from us back to Him. He gives us gifts, and together, like forgiveness, identity and baptism. He gives to us His word and applies it to our life. Then Barry goes on to say, "We build one another up as we speak together in Psalms, and hymns, and spiritual songs." Right? All of those things, accepting them all, not just hymns, but also spiritual songs as well. And our Lord gives us His body to eat and His blood to drink. Finally, His blessing then moves us out into our calling. So we gather together to be with the Father, and to be with one another, to receive His gifts, and to be built up. But then, it moves us out into our calling, which is based on Matthew 28:18-20, "Go ye therefore and make disciples of all nations." Right? And it's each and every one of us. It's not just the pastors. Each and every one of us. He says, "Finally, His blessing moves us out into our calling, where His gifts have their fruition." In other words, they bear fruit. How best to do this, we learn from the Word, and from the way His word has prompted His worship through the centuries. We are heirs of an astonishingly rich tradition. Each generation receives, get this, each generation receives from those who went before, and in making that tradition of the divine service its own, adds what best may serve in its own day. The living heritage and something new. And something new. So finally, this last part. "In its hymnody, each age of the church reflects what it returns to God for the great blessings it has received from Him." Some of the church's song is always derived from the previous era. "The early church developed its music from the psalmody of the synagogue, to which it added the strophic hymns of Greek and Roman converts. When the liturgy became the sole property of the clergy, when the liturgy became the sole property of the clergy, there arose a need for hymns in the language of the people. And thus, there came into being the great body of Latin hymns, introduced and promoted by Bishop Ambrose of Milan and his followers. In time, these again became the property of the clergy. And the hierarchy, the Lutheran Reformation once more restored the church's song to the people in their native tongue. Then, from then on, the Lutheran Church became known as the singing church. The song of His church has weathered and withstood such influences as pietism, rationalism, modernism, universalism in one form or another." So as you think about what Matthew 28 is calling us to do, He's calling us to gather together and to remain open, to value our tradition, and to hold it high, and to not lose the church's song from our past. But He's also holding us, for the sake of a next generation, to be open to the church offering its new song. Its new song, that some of you may not like. Every generation has had to open itself up and stay open, stay open. Notice what He said in there about when the church becomes sick in its worship life? Did you pick it up? When the liturgy and the hymnody became owned by the clergy. Right? That ownership, when the church begins to say through its pastors, that you only do this the way we want you to do it. And they take that position of ownership and authority, the church has gotten really, really sick. And there has been a move of the Holy Spirit to reclaim for the people of God the hymnody, the liturgy, the worship life that belongs to the Lord and His people, and His people, from one generation to another, from one generation to another. Right? So that the church is always, from one generation to another, loving on one another, worshiping, diving into the Word that way, so that we are equipped, and then sent. This is why I talk to you often. I hope this won't be the first time you've ever heard these words. This is why we talk about this idea of gather, grow, and send. Gather, gather together as the baptized believers in Jesus, gather together in sanctuary and Bible study, gathered together wherever two or more are with them, gathered together. Right? So that then growth takes place. Now, not intellectual growth. Because knowledge, just on its own, has a tendency to puff us up in pride. But the reason that you are here is that you would love more, and out of the Word of God be equipped and inspired to love one another, but then also love people when you're sent out there. We gather, we grow, and then we're sent. And the heart of that sending is that the baptized are sent by Jesus and told, "Go and make disciples of all nations." Baptizing them, "In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit." Teaching them to obey everything I've commanded you. And His promise is this, "As you use these tools, I will be with you. I will be with you." The power agent over it all. "I will be with you." To the very end of the age. And what Satan would love to do is to lop off all of that and make it just about, you come in here and getting your church fixed. You come in here and meeting with Him, and knowing more, and loving one another more, all the while, all the while, there are less and less people all around you. And so the church, what Satan would love to do is get you turned in on yourself. And Trinity is doing a fantastic job of not letting that happen. Had a mission festival a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about 14 places where we are in the country doing mission work around the world. We could have talked about 40 different places and ways that different groups of people at Trinity are out there doing the work of the Lord in the community. And not just moves of Trinity as a ministry, but also groups of people who meet together and then make a difference in the community, and individuals who, in the pattern of where they go and the way that they go there, are loving the world around them and giving witness. Trinity is awesome in its missional heart. One of the things that I would say Trinity is most known for is being open to new, creative, and inventive. But I will tell you that there's always a tendency that you gotta fight in your own head, your own heart in life, about getting stuck and beginning to say, "This is the only way, the way I like, is the only way that we should be worshiping, learning, teaching, involved." We've always got to keep stretching one another and stay open, stay open. If you don't stay open, you become just like that other church down the street that you would never go to. Stay open to the creativity and the progressive nature of doing life on mission in these days. And then also, being missional, being open to meeting need in the community. We gather here so that we can be equipped, and we can be loved, and we can love one another, but that's never an end in itself. The reason we gather here is so that then we can grow and then be sent. The end happens out there. Actually, that's not true. An end happens out there as you're sharing your faith. The end happens when you're bringing somebody back with you, and they're kneeling at the communion rail with you. And we do that together with more people walking home to heaven with us, and we get home to heaven where the end is, out there. Conversation, thought? What do you think? Wow. Your silence is agreement, or your silence is frustration with your pastor? Dottie?
I just want to say, easier said than done.
About a week after I got here, I wrote a note based on a line in a movie. Based on a line in a movie. You guys remember, it was a Michael Douglas part in The American President? You remember this movie at all? Okay, good, then maybe you'll remember this. He was in the speech when he finally began to speak up, and he was standing up in front of the press, and he was defending himself. In the middle of the speech, he said this line. You remember this? He finally stands up and speaks against this guy that was on the attack. And in the middle of it, he said this line, "America is advanced citizenship. You gotta want it bad, because it's gonna put up a fight." Right? Remember that line? Remember that in the speech? Google it. Do the Google. And so, I would, the moment I set foot on Trinity's campus, and the moment we began to do life together, it just occurred to me, Trinity is advanced citizenship. You gotta want it bad, because it's gonna put up a fight. And you now are the generation of the hoary-headed elder who is in the Word of God together with the pastor in order to do the hard work of being able to hand on the deposit from this generation to the next generation, stronger than when we found it. It is hard work. It is true. Easier said than done. But unless you're just gonna sit down and consume the minute and consume the ministry until the last person's dead and you turn out the light, this is the work. If you're gonna turn around and see increase instead of decrease, this is the hard work. The, oh, look at that. So, the Word of God in the waters of your baptism gives to you identity. Right? Identity. The Word of God connected to the water gives to you identity. You are, um, you are, you, you won't hear this often in any other denomination other than us. You are the baptized. Right? You ever have a pastor that talked that way, uh, before? You ever heard that from any of the other guys? You are the baptized. And it is you who are called together to do this hard work and to be these people in this generation for the sake of the generation that comes next. And it is really, really exciting to me, the people who are coming up behind you. They may not, they may not look like you do and love what you love. But they are strong indeed. And, uh, and, and Trinity has some amazing people, uh, coming along, uh, coming along in your train. And some of you gave birth to some of them. So, sorry. But, uh, the idea, the idea of, uh, your baptism is that between now and the day that he gets you home, you are sent. That's why Jesus in Matthew twenty-eight says to each and every one of you, "Go." We gather together, we are with him and with one another, and then he says, "Go." Every time you gather together, it's like holding on to one another, holding one another up, strengthening one another, praying about what wisdom looks like when, when you do go and then you go. You have two choices. You can either say, "I'm too old" and you can just sit and receive the ministry. Or you can, at whatever season you are, with whatever strength and resource you have, be a part of the going. Be a part of the going. I mean, we, we could just keep on doing the same old thing, the same old way and continue to see decline. My hope and my prayer for us is that we'll make a better choice. But it's gonna take all of us. It's gonna take all of us, no matter how you feel. You may not, you, you may not, uh, you may not sign up to, to, to go out and, and confrontationally evangelize people on the street a- at this season of your life or with the wiring that you have. Not everybody's wired to be a Charlie Kirk. Right? Um, most of us are, are designed to, instead of that, and what I mean by that is, uh, apologist, rational defense of the gospel, uh, confrontational, trying to argue someone to your point of view, kinda thing. Most of us are not called to that. But all of us, from Matthew twenty-eight, are called by Almighty God to do three things. To find ways to meet need in the world and in your travel with the people that God brings across the path of your life. As a way to open doors for his love so that it makes a difference that you have come this way. That's number one. Number two is out of First Peter, chapter three, verse fifteen, where it says, "Set apart Christ as Lord and always be ready to give an answer for the hope that you have in your heart that you're saved. But do that with gentleness and respect." Right? Instead of confrontation and those kinda things, trying to argue people from unbelief to faith. We are called with gentleness and respect to just share the hope we have in our hearts that we're saved and what Jesus is up to and what he means for us in our life, uh, in these days. And then, invite. Invite, that's the third thing. Invite people into a relationship with him, into a relationship with you, or into a relationship with us. Invite all along the way. And so, when he sends you, the idea is that you would go out there and do those things. Love well, give a witness, love well, uh, give the hope, uh, that you have in your heart that you're saved to people who are dying for hope and looking for it in all the wrong places. And so, when he says, "Go", and he's talking to each and every one of us, this is what he's talking about. Right? And it is your identity as a child of God in baptism that signs you up for these marching orders. Thoughts, questions? Part one. Let's close. Dear Lord God, Heavenly Father, I ask you that you would be with us and that you would inspire the life before us where we are. Not where we wish we were, but where we are. We open ourselves up to the journey of a lifetime. Use us in ways that we can navigate in these days that you would send us as disciples in this life, the baptized, out to the witness of the world in this day. In your name we pray. Amen. Thanks, you guys.